How the meeting to order, invite you join me in the invocation.
Dear Lord, we come to you in prayer asking for so much when we give so little. We ask you to forgive us of our sins and for the protection of our loved ones. Lead us to help others in this time of need. Show us compassion and how we may reach out and help the people of Texas as they cope with devastation and a life of uncertainty and confusion. Be with all that are suffering and show them the love a country looking to help when a normal life is so hard to remember. Lord, we pray that you provide the way to recovery for all that need your touch. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Item number two is approval of minutes. Consider approval of the regular session and closed session minutes.
Over approval.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three is a public hearing to consider a conditional use permit seventeen four for the property addressed nineteen twenty Hillco Street. May I have staff come forward first to introduce this? And council, since this is a conditional use permit, we need to announce any conflicts that we may have. And first I'll start, I was contacted before this became a conditional use permit and asked some questions, but have not been contacted since the conditional use permit. Anyone else, council has anything to declare?
Same for me, Your Honor. I was contacted prior to.
Anyone else?
Not been contacted.
Okay. Staff, you want to introduce it?
Sure. So this is a conditional use permit for an expansion of an existing business actually, under ninety-two point zero eight zero C four, which is General Highway Business District Zone as a conditional use. A building or group of buildings that contain varying size of individual compartmentalized, controlled and exterior access stalls or lockers for the dead storage of non-hazardous materials, provided however the storage unit shall be enclosed by fence not less than six feet in height. No business activities other than the rental of storage units shall be conducted on the premises. So this is, let me actually go back real quick and show you the supplemental. This is the existing site. Mr. Estridge owns it. As you can see, it's already a rental storage unit. I think this was constructed in the eighties. Is that correct, Mr. Estridge? It's constructed in the eighties. And essentially what he's doing is he wanted to expand on it. And when I was reading the ordinance and I noticed the expansion, I thought that it would probably prudent to go back for a conditional use permit for the expansion of the existing one. As you know, ordinances have changed, I'm sure, since the eighties. So that's where we are with this situation. I can present the findings, but I don't know if you would like Mr. Estridge.
Before we go over there, I just wanted your introduction. Anyone who cares to speak for or against in this public hearing, I need you to come forward so we can swear you in.
Have a Bible, miss?
Left hand on Bible, raise your right, please. The testimony you about to give to be the truth, the whole truth, and that but truths that you got.
Do.
Okay. Mr. Estridge, why don't you explain to us what you're wanting to do to begin with?
Basically, I just backing up what he said. If we want to expand, we're gonna put twenty by eighty building in there, which will be four storage units. Maybe eventually if permitted, we'll put some more in there. But this is consistent with what's already there. And I hope you approve it. Thank you.
Council, have any questions? Are you ready to go through the findings of fact and we'll ask individual questions at that time?
Close here.
Not sure anything else you have to say?
I did a staff analysis on the findings of fact. If you want me to go through that after or before?
Please.
Okay, sure. So the first, in the findings of fact, the first one is that the use will not materially endanger the public health, safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plans submitted and approved. It is important to note at this point that Mr. Estridge actually does have a site plan for this property. I've been working with Sam Smith of the local engineering firm, name escaped me at the moment. Thank you, Chambers. And we've been going through this stuff, so he's required to submit all this as for the proposed site development. And a lot of that will actually help with the staff analysis part. So the response to the first one was, for the applicant, was no endangerment to the public health, welfare, or safety will be developed by this project. He didn't really have too much information one way or another for this, but it is an existing site and it's really just an expansion. And the actual zone is currently GHBD, so it doesn't seem like it's gonna have too much of an adverse effect onto the existing site or nearby areas that are zoned commercial. Number two, the use meets all required conditions and specifications. The applicant has stated as such that it does. And that is the case in this, with the site plan that was submitted. It does show that this property is actually in the watershed. So given the information that he presented when we did the calculations, he will actually meet the requirements specified under the watershed ordinance. And he's also proposing to do the six-foot fence as required. So as of right now, this proposal does meet the specified conditions stipulated in the ordinance. The use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property or that the use is a public necessity. Applicant saying that the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. And also mentioned that there is a large mini storage facility area in the nearby. And that's the case. The submitted area will show that the parcel is zoned GHBD and that the parcel is in proximity with other commercial uses, including mini storage. So let's go to here. So as you can see, parcel is zoned, General Highway Business District. A lot of the adjoining area is General Highway Business District. This is what was the referenced existing mini storage. This site two actually has a fence in the front, so it is fenced in as well. And here's the future land use map. If you can come down here, anything in red is actually considered commercial. And you can see the property is right here actually as it stands. So it is very much in line. The risk of it, you know, injuring any adjoining property values is slim, given the fact that current use is commercial, the use around it's commercial, and future use is projected to be commercial. And the scale is not as large as the adjoining one. So it seems like it's a fair assumption to make. The proposed use is in harmony with adjacent uses in terms of location, scale, site design, hours of operation, operating characteristics. Yeah, the applicant's response is the property, the proposed use is in harmony with adjacent uses in terms of location, scale, site design, hours of operation, and operating characteristics. The current site has an existing mini storage facility and adjacent property currently has a mini storage facility, which is the case. Site plan shows an expansion of existing mini storage in a commercially zoned parcel that will meet the watershed requirements and other conditions specified. It is important to note that Mr. Estridge did already submit plans to us and to the building department over at Stanley County for the structure and the design of those buildings. So those were pretty much approved by everyone. And the reason why this has been stopped is because he needed a conditional use permit to start, to continue. So everything else was checked and approved before we got to this point pertaining to building fire code. And the only thing that hasn't been met is zoning. And five, being general conformant in conformance with the adopted plans. That's supposed to be conformance. And of course, it is. The adopted plan that we have right now for the guiding city is the land use plan. And here it is, showing it to be commercial. Any questions of me or Mr. Estridge?
Council, if you have any questions about the findings of fact, we need to do them now. Okay, before we close the public hearing, anyone else care to speak for or against? Hearing that, I entertain a motion, close public hearing.
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Aldrich, second. By Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Council will go through the findings of fact individually. Number one, the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and approved.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall. Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, the use meets all required conditions and specifications.
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Dry. Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property or that the use is a public necessity.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes. Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. The proposed use is in harmony with adjacent uses in terms of location, scale, site design, hours of operation, and operating characteristics. Motion by Councilmember Bramlett.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldrich. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And number five, the plan is in the general confirmation with the adopted plans of the city. Motion by Councilmember Bramlett. Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And I need a motion to adopt the conditional use permit.
Move to approve the conditional permit number seventeen double oh four for nineteen twenty Hillco Street, Your Honor.
Motion by Councilmember Dry. Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Mr. Edger, you're ready to proceed. Number four, under announced allegations, Mr. Dan Burris, Marine Corps League, to discuss designated parking for the combat wounded.
Ladies and gentlemen, I think the last time I was up here, I had a Boy Scout cap.
I made the comment he wish a lot has.
And the reason I came, I talked with Mr. Ferris. We have this thing that goes Purple Heart Cities. It's a wounded reserve combat veteran parking space. It carries no penalty like an actual.
Handicap.
Handicap parking position. But it can be attached to one or the backside of one if it's appropriate, on the backside of a regular one. Or we're trying to get these throughout the Purple Heart Cities, to put a little designation out there for Liberty Gardens, ADDC, places like that. You think, I talked with Mr. Ferris, and he decided a couple of places he'd like to have one at a time. I said, well, let me present it to them. And y'all look through, see what you can afford. We are selling these for twenty-five dollars. That's about what it cost us to get them to us, transport it and ship to us. And this is Paul Hummel. He is our detachment commander with ten twenty-one Stanley detachment. He is also a combat wounded personnel. He's a veteran, Vietnam, and I think he was wounded three or four times.
Those count after a while.
But this, we got presented with these by our detachment, that the North Carolina Marine Corps League Division can get us. And we thought it would be nice, we're going to Locust next week to talk to them about out there at their centers. But we're trying to present these throughout the county and thought I'd just present it, let y'all see it. And decide, get back in touch with us, let us know if you want any, and contact us. I think, you still have my phone number, Mr. Ferris?
I sure do.
Okay, that's about it. Any questions about?
Thank you, Mr. Burris. In fact, council, we've been having some discussions on parking. We'd like to take it under advisement and decide which way is the best to put it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question, if you wanted to buy one for your business.
Twenty-five dollars.
Oh, that'd be great.
And that's one thing we're doing to pursuing businesses.
It does cost us twenty-five bucks to get a model. I mean, we're not making the next one, that's.
I understand.
Thirty-five.
Profit.
But yeah, if you can use that number, contact me, we'll get you one if you'd like one. We are doing, we got it at Walmart, we got it at the Boston Square. Of course, you know Myra Whitley at Boston Square. She knows, donates all the food usually for the Memorial Day flag. So we gave her one.
They are going out, we got some over at.
Marley's. Marley's has one, so.
So they're going.
It's new, it's quarter by the Marine Corps League, and we got our little hash, well, what do you call that? They click on that and they get the whole story behind everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll be back in touch.
Thank you.
Under unannounced allegation, Mr. Wayne Sasser to introduce himself. Will give me your address too, as you.
Okay. Two-nine oh-one-three Jordan Pond Drive, Albemarle, NC. Mayor and council members, thank you for the opportunity. I apologize for being a minute late. I just left the Farm Bureau Ag Arena meeting, which I proudly like to, since it's in the Albemarle City limits, will be a sub one-point-five million dollar project. We've raised one-point-three million dollars. At this point, have the other two-hundred thousand obligated. We've just not quite finished the race yet. And that breaks down to about forty percent, what I call public money. It's not all Stanley County taxpayer money, but it's somebody's taxpayer money. And about sixty-seven percent private. So that's how I like to do things. But again, my name's Wayne Sasser. I'm running for the sixty-seventh NC House seat. I wanted to come and just introduce myself to the members here, let you know that I would like to sit down with each one of you individually, talk about what the needs of Albemarle are, what I can do for you on the state level, and make you a promise that I won't do anything on the state level without the majority of this board asking for me to do it. I won't do it on my own. So that's basically all I had to say. I just wanted to introduce myself and appreciate the opportunity. And if I can help the city of Albemarle in any way, that's my only intentions, is to help the citizens of Stanley County and Cabarrus County, which is my district now.
Well, we thank you very much for coming up and introducing yourself. I think most everybody here probably already knows you, but we thank you and look forward to meeting with you. Council, have any questions? Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number five, your municipal calendar is in your agenda. If the council has any questions?
There's one correction, Mayor. RPO meeting is the fourteenth.
September.
Instead of the twenty, I think it's on here as a.
Usually is the third, the first.
Twenty-first, but I think because of the league conference, they backed it up. So it's on the fourteen.
What is NCMVA number one?
North County Municipal Power Agency, one.
Electric cities.
Yeah. That basically applies to Mr. Ferris, I don't think.
It's more you, Bobby, it's something I'm supposed to be.
Anyone else have any questions?
I want to thank you, Bobby Pen.
Move on into unfinished business. Number six, discussion of a possible golf cart ordinance. In your agenda, you have a kind of a spreadsheet from the chief, what he found. After our last meeting, we had some questions. We asked him to get some more information. You have that before you tonight. It's now open for discussion.
And I'm gonna, I'll start the discussion. Number one, I'm glad you all, last week, last week, golly, last meeting, four weeks ago. Now we're back on that two-week rotation. When I needed to step out to county commissioners meeting that night, I almost hesitated because I knew this was gonna come up while I was gone, but thank you for holding it open. I found the information that the chief gave us, thanks chief, to be enlightening to me. I have been in the last, since our last meeting, in two communities. Both of them are, neither of them are mentioned in this particular spreadsheet where they have, one has an ordinance and one does not have an ordinance, but they allow for the use of golf carts. One of them is Kings Mountain. And when you look at Kings Mountain and look at Albemarle, Kings Mountain has seventy-four running through, as we have twenty-four, twenty-seven, and fifty-two. And I was there just less than two weeks ago and saw folks at a park, at a public event, who had driven their golf carts. I am very much in support of us doing one. I love the ordinance that has, that has been, well, the issue that could be put into an ordinance that's before us. Some folks may think it's maybe too strict, but I would love to start with one that's more strict than not. And I'd like to move forward. If we have any folks out there that want to use them and they can meet the qualifications, go for it. If not, then we won't have them. I do not believe that there will be a lot of folks that have them, but I would love to be able to allow folks the opportunity if they want to and want to meet the qualifiers to be able to use them.
Further comments?
I just have a personal feeling, I disagree with you, Martha. I'd say if it's within walking distance, walk. If it isn't, drive a car. I worry about people, I see them at the beach. I worry about people on busy streets and somebody's gonna get hurt one of these days badly. So I, and I just, they just seem like a toy to me. I don't quite get the point of them. I'd say if you, within walking distance, walk. If you're not, take your car.
Further comments?
I was looking at the ordinances in the other cities. I was pleased to see at the last meeting, the couple of concerns I had were, you know, and I'm okay either way. I mean, I can see the pros and the cons to it. But if we do adopt this policy, the only way that I could feel comfortable voting for it, sixteen years of age, proof of insurance, and lights and turn signals. I mean, I don't want it to be, I don't want it to be a safety issue or a hazard to citizens driving around. So that's, that was my thoughts.
Sixteen or eighteen?
Valid driver's licenses. Let me just back up, valid driver's license, whether they're sixteen or sixteen-four.
Valid driver's license.
Just a valid driver's license, proof of insurance.
Further comments?
I would like to tag on a little bit with Councilmember Aldrich's thoughts. I'm either way, sort of, kinda. I mean, I will say, I was out of town this weekend at a resort area. There were no golf carts, but there were bicycles. And that, you know, we've talked about having bicycle lanes downtown and that type of thing. And, you know, I would even think about having those where you can get on a bicycle and ride it somewhere and leave the bike, and then you get a bike and take it back. I know those are in some of the bigger cities, but I'm not so sure, maybe bicycles might not be something to consider. But I would prefer the most strict, stringent ordinances if we do this is, I want it all lights and licenses and safety and all that, but.
I appreciate the chief providing us this information. Before we totally strike it down or anything, I would like for us, if we don't do anything else, let's at least take into consideration possibly like allowing it like in subdivisions, parks and stuff of that nature. You know, and just use that as a trial basis before we just totally do away with not having it, allowing it at all. We gotta start somewhere.
That's right.
But in the previous conversation, weren't we, wasn't this proposal based on just thirty-five mile-per-hour streets anyway?
That's what the law says. The law, that's restricted. You have to be sixteen years old and you have to be thirty-five or under. You can cross a forty-five mile-per-hour road, but not ride on it.
In a designated area, right? You can cross them.
Cross it at intersection things and that type thing, but not right on a forty-five mile-per-hour road.
Is our next step, if we want to move forward, Mayor, to ask staff to draft an ordinance for us to look at?
Well, before we spend the money to draft an ordinance, I think council needs to decide first if they want to proceed and what restrictions we won't put in the ordinance.
I don't have a problem with it either way. If you've got it restricted to if you have a driver's license, if you're sixteen, and certain safety restrictions on the cart, can't cross or can't drive along a street more than thirty-five miles an hour, you can already ride mopeds and bicycles and all that. So my opinion, it doesn't seem that much more of a risk, that much more dangerous to ride these. One question I did have is, there's a difference between a golf cart and a low-speed vehicle. Now, there's some low-speed vehicles supposedly that look like golf carts that are completely licensed by the state, they've got a tag on them, they've got insurance, turn signals, wind, the whole nine yards, but they kind of look like a golf cart.
We would not be regulating that, you're correct. State already regulates that.
Right, okay, yeah. So, but those can't go on certain roads either, right?
Talking about like the Gators, is that, what are you talking about, like them Gators?
You can do a golf cart now if you do everything, insurance tag, inspection, everything on, you can do that now.
Well, I guess what I was getting at was, I don't want to go through here and pick all the restrictions and we wind up, that's what we wind up with, is those types of vehicles. You know, so if we're gonna do golf carts, make sure it's a golf cart. I mean, I guess you can require, what, turn signals and brake lights? Do they all have that? Do most of them have that?
Well, just look at example, I'll just start with Lincoln and Moxwell, they're kind of real similar. They require the driver's license and the sixteen-year-old, that's state law, so they require that. Rearview mirror, I agree with that. The emblem, yes, that's definitely, you need something on the back that the police department can identify, that it's been inspected, and it's got the emblem on it. That would be something we would provide at the inspection, I would think. Headlights, taillights, unless you're gonna allow them at night, you don't need that. That's totally up to, and that's would not be required. And then the proof of insurance, I think obviously you want that. Daylight only, that's obvious. Safety inspection would be, you need to clarify, you're talking a state safety inspection or you're talking a police department safety inspection? Because if you're not doing it with license plate and other, you would not do a state inspection, just be an inspection by the police department annually.
Seems like if you did a state inspection, you wouldn't be talking about a golf cart.
Right.
Right, exactly. So that should be considered a police department safety inspection. Height restriction, I'm not really sure what that's got to do with anything. Is there an example, chief, that somebody, why they're using height restriction?
They don't peel the.
I'll walk up here. The height restriction referred to, some of the municipalities had a restriction on how high they could be lifted.
Gotcha.
It was twenty-two inches, I think was the requirement. That's what that referred to. So you want to take them off-road, I guess?
And then the last one, it's already state law, you couldn't be on fifty-two.
So.
Or twenty-four, twenty-seven.
But by looking at this, we've, basically that, we have, the ordinance or the things that we want to have on there is just right here.
If you model it after Lincoln and Moxwell, yes, they're pretty much similar. But I don't think there's anything different.
City attorney gets something.
A lot of the municipalities require a horn or some kind of warning device. I didn't hear a horn mentioned in there, or, you know, some kind of warning device.
It's not on there, but that would be, yeah, they could add that, I'm sure.
Are those things that are typically on?
Yeah.
Golf carts, horns and.
They're not typically on a golf cart.
Well, we have one on a golf cart.
Only one I've ever driven's occasionally on a golf cart, so they don't have all that stuff.
Typically have them. But you can add them. Council, what's your wish? If you want to proceed forward, I'd like to entertain a motion with all the restrictions you want.
I'll place that on the table and we can, you want to speak before the motion?
I just, I know it's state law, but I still have a problem with a sixteen-year-old who's just gotten a driver's license. He gets behind the wheel of a golf cart, coming into town, lickety-split. I mean, if you go out there and see it, they don't have a lot of, there's no experience there in driving. And this is a whole different endeavor. And I know we can't circumvent state law, but I think we could probably add some. If I had a sixteen-year-old doing it and we pass it out, I'd be in there with him. I think an adult needs to be in there.
Even though they can still drive a car.
You know, listen, a car is one thing, a golf cart has no protection. That has no protection whatsoever. And, you know, they're not, I'm just speaking as a parent and a grandparent and looking at these things over the last twenty-eight years on the east side of this state. And I've seen some young kids, and I've seen some older people be idiots on it too. But, you know, there's just an experience level there that concerns me.
So you're saying, look at the one similar to Lincoln and make it eighteen, or what do you say?
I would be a lot more comfortable at eighteen than I would at sixteen.
I have no problem.
Quite honestly.
Totally up to council.
Holly Springs says that. Holly Springs says eighteen-years-old. Your Honor. Your Honor, I'd place on the table a motion, and it can be edited as anyone decides to, but that we ask staff to draft an ordinance with the following conditions. That we allow golf carts within the city of Albemarle, and that we only allow those who have a valid driver's license and who are 18 years or older. That the golf cart have a rear view mirror.
And, and horn there.
And I've got, and a horn, and I've got that's next. A horn slash warning. Hold on to the next one for just a moment. That we have proof of insurance, that it be for daylight only, that they go through a safety inspection at that time with the police department, and at that time will be getting, on an annual basis, an annual inspection, they will be getting their slow-moving vehicle emblem. And because it's already state law, we don't need to pass that restriction, but that we need to enforce that restriction, that will only be in areas that are 35 miles an hour and they can cross anywhere, they can cross 24, 27, or 52 at a valid crossing. And I would like, anybody can do anything they want to.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Now for discussion.
Got a question. If we're going to be doing inspections, will there be a fee associated with the inspection?
Yes. And I, and I will tell you that, going back to, again, the person from Kings Mountain I was talking to was completely happy with it. I said, "So where do you get that sticker?" He said, "The city gives it to me," and didn't say the police department, "but, and that, every year." And I didn't, I said, "Do you pay for that?" And he said, "Yes." So I'm not sure how much it was. I mean, we have a car, we have that car tax of $5 a year. I think that we need to look at where else, what else might be reasonable. I don't know what reasonable is, but I would...
Mr. Aldridge?
Well, that's what I was going to, the question I was going to pose to the chief is, when you were doing the research, getting these ordinances from the various cities, did we have an idea of what they charge per cart?
I do not, because most of these were just in their ordinance, wherever we pulled it off the website, and it just said a fee to be set by city council.
If you don't mind, you can do a search. I do know that Kings Mountain, that they pay for theirs, okay? I mean, I know that, they told me that, somebody there told me that. I think probably you could just probably do a web search or something on that. And at least get an idea, and then we can fill in that blank at a later date.
Further discussion?
Mayor, I know, I know we automatically assume that common sense prevailed in a lot of situations.
Oh, don't ever assume that.
But should we put limitations like, for instance, the number of passengers, max number of passengers? You know, because some, some of them got two seats.
Two seats and so forth.
I don't think we would, I don't think we would want to see four passengers.
On a one-seater. Well, that's, that's good. I mean, that's a good thought.
Yeah, you're going to have some that's going to have, that's going to be hard to answer, because some golf carts are going to have only two seats, some are going to have four seats, and some of the club carts have six seats.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. How about one person per seat or worded something like that?
Well, it would just...
I agree with you, because you don't want to put 10 people in a two-seat.
You know, this is just a statement. I just don't want, if we approve this thing, I just don't want this to be an unbelievable headache for our police officers and police department. And, you know, they do a phenomenal job and they have a very, you know, I don't want their emergencies to be regulating and pulling golf carts over because they had five people instead of four people and one headlights, you know, not working or vice versa. I just, I just don't want to make this thing so complicated. If we approve it, I want it to be simple, clean, easy, and I don't want our officers to get bogged down trying to enforce this stuff.
I'd be surprised. Well, I can see three people on a two-person seat, because I can see two adults and a child in the middle of it, like on a golf cart. So I...
I can too.
Well, I said, this would be, this would be a starting point.
Yeah. Right, we can always come back and...
We're going to have to tweak it at some point in time.
Yeah.
All right, I have a motion and a second on the floor.
Does this mean you could ride a golf cart on Main Street and Beatty Avenue and First Street and Second Street?
Yes.
Anywhere from 35. Anywhere from 35.
35 or under. Hearing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
One against. Now, let's have a little bit of discussion on the fee. We've seen anywhere from five to probably 15. I saw, I think I saw one city with 15. We need to do at least enough to recover our cost of those emblems. So, what, has council got a preference of that?
I would like to see what, what Danny finds out there, okay? Because I hadn't seen any, I've not seen any money.
I will, I will check with the municipalities that have a ordinance and see what they charge. I have contacted a printer to see what a three-by-three reflective sticker like we used to have for the inspection stickers on vehicles. And those were, if I'm not mistaken, $300 for a roll of 100. But it's a reflective material that will hold up, so that expense plus, I'm sure we can come up with some type of inspection as far as safety and all, but that shouldn't be part. But I'll check with the other municipalities and get back and let you know what I find.
Okay.
What about, will they park at a house and will they take up parking places downtown?
Yes, they could, yes.
Will that be in the ordinance?
Well, if they were driving a car, they'd take up a parking place downtown too.
I understand that, but I mean...
I think the parking downtown is yes, it would have, we would have to allow it if we're going to allow them on the street. Now, the house, I can't answer that. We don't, we don't restrict parking in the front yard or anything like that, so I don't know how we would restrict this.
Don't we have so many vehicles in a yard or something?
No.
I didn't think we allowed any vehicles in the yard.
We can, as long as they don't impede traffic on that street, because...
You're talking, I think you're thinking junk vehicles.
Junk vehicles, or vehicles without tags.
Well, there's another one in there too, which says that as long, I mean, it's more of a police thing, because we've had that discussion. You just can't have it sitting within the roadway and you've got to have 10 feet and different things there. And you have people that like to park trailers and stuff behind the vehicles on a street that can't impede traffic. And that you can't do, but that's enforced by the police.
Anyone have any more questions? If not, council, the staff will bring us something back at the next meeting.
Just to be clear, I guess what we'll bring back is in ordinance format drafted by the city attorney, we'll get with Mr. Beaver and present him the stipulations that were presented or recommended tonight, and then we'll either have a recommended fee or a sort of a fill-in-the-blank option. You know, anything is still subject to change and open to change at this point anyway, but we'll have a draft for council's review when, when it's prepared.
Moving on, under new business, number seven, consider change orders for the solid waste recycling employee facility.
I look at Chris Framblin when I see this.
Yeah. Welcome to the hot seat.
Yeah.
How are y'all tonight?
Good.
Like to introduce Mark Boland, he's a principal with Shield Engineer. They designed the building and are providing full-time CQA on the project. I'll let Mark go through his PowerPoint, and then I think he was going to open the floor to questions afterwards.
Well, you know, good evening, Mayor and council members. Again, yeah, my name's Mark Boland and I'm a principal engineer with Shield Engineering. And I just, as a matter of introduction, I just want to just give you real briefly, I've been in the engineering field for 30 years, 20 years with, with Shield Engineering. Before that, worked for another consulting company, and I've also got six years as active duty with the Navy Civil Engineer Corps, including eight years as a drilling reservist to add to that. What I'd like to do is, I've, I'm going to present this little, very short little PowerPoint and so forth, it's just five slides. And we can do it, one way is I'd like to, you know, we can go through each, I can go through each one of the slides and at the end we can open up for questions, or we can do it slide by slide. So if you, if you want to go and start asking questions based on the individual slides, because it's going to be one slide per change order that I wanted to present. The first, first change order is an upgrade of the building's roofing system from a aluminum-zinc alloy material to a Kynar 500 roofing system. And I just want to present some bulleted facts here to, points and so forth as to what this is. Originally, of course, the plans were specified for an aluminum-zinc alloy material in the industry and so forth, they call it also galvalume. Galvalume has a 25-year warranty. You can get different building manufacturers, they might add, add five years to it, subtract five years or something like that, but on average, it's around 25. In fact, the Kirby system and so forth that the contractor has selected for this, for this building and so forth, they're going to provide a 20, they would, they would provide a 25-year warranty for a galvalume roof material. The, the interest here from staff and so forth is they want to upgrade that to the Kynar 500 roofing system. That has a 35-year warranty. And it's also classified by the building manufacturer as a cool metal system. And by that it means that it also takes the heat, the sun's radiation and so forth and as opposed to absorbing it and dissipating into the, to the attic space and inside the building and so forth. It's got a, it's got its reflective qualities and allows for the, the radiation to not be that much of an impact. So according to the manufacturer, they'll, they claim that it could reduce your, your energy consumption and so forth by, say, 40% and so forth, and that's, that's from the manufacturer. And of course, that would be for the cooling systems and so forth, you'd find that probably during the, during the hot winter months and so forth when AC is running and so forth. And I've got a little display image over here showing, this is what the, the Kynar system, how it's built upon and so forth. And one of the things I just wanted to point out is, right here in the middle, these three right there, you can see you've got a bare steel roofing material and so forth, and top and bottom you've got, it's galvanized, galvanized. That is your galvalume material. The Kynar is built upon, you're going to have the pretreatment primer and top coat and so forth, so it's extra protection and so forth. The manufacturer also claims that the fading capabilities and chalking and so forth is much, much, much reduced as opposed to the, this galvalume material. So overall, it's a better, better quality and so forth. The contractor's quote and so forth to, to upgrade this and so forth is $6,720 over what his, the galvanized or the galvalume roof material.
Question.
Yes.
What was the original, the, the galvanized or aluminum, whatever you were calling it, the zinc alloy, what was that original price or quote?
That I do, I do not know, because it was built into the unit price for the building material itself, the building kit.
Gotcha.
So I don't have that.
So we don't know what, what percentage this is of the roof, if you will?
Right.
We don't know how much the percentage of that is of the roof portion.
For, for the building kit itself, and, and my guess, working with other building kits of a similar, you know, 5,000, 5,100 square foot area and so forth, a building kit could be $150,000, $200,000 and so forth. And that includes the roof, the walls, the, the panel liners and so forth, the steel column and so forth. So the roofing would be all part of that.
Then are other, are the other four change orders part of that kit?
Part, they're related to the kit. They're related to the kit.
Would they be then included in that $150,000 to $200,000?
No, no.
Okay, that answers a bit of what I wanted to note.
Yes.
The original roofing, was that a 26, 25, 24?
25.
That would be about a 25-year.
Okay, that's a, that's still in a residential mode there. If you go, as you go down in number, the thickness increases and the value increases of the roof. If you went to a 24, you're starting to get into the commercial grades. Why aren't we not looking at a commercial grade thickness for this building?
Oh, we are, we are, okay, excuse me, excuse me. Yes, okay, I was, yes, we are, this is a commercial grade thickness.
At 26.
Yes. I, I assumed you were talking about the warranties and so forth.
Well, the thickness of the metal.
The gauge thickness.
As you go down, the thickness gets thick, it gets thicker. So therefore, you look at, like the manufacturer says, he presumes it could not fade, but who knows? You know, this is man-made.
It is man-made, yes.
And man-made stuff is not, you know, of God's being. So therefore, I'm, I'm really concerned as to that, what are we getting for another 600, I mean, $6,720 here?
And my, my disappointment is not as much as what you're saying there, the difference is, why didn't we know this upfront? I mean, this was in the design plan, should have been upfront, we shouldn't even be talking about this tonight. Go ahead, sir.
Hold on, one, one question. On this galvalume, is, is it different categories of galvalume, like the percentage of aluminum and zinc? You know, like, I assume that this is comprised of a certain, more, more aluminum than zinc or what? Do you have any idea what percentage?
That I do not, that I do not know, and my limited knowledge and so forth on the actual percentages of aluminum and zinc and so forth, it could be, you know, 70% aluminum.
Because I'm just wondering, if you've got a high-grade galvalume, is it a lot cheaper than this additional $6,000 and some dollars, you know?
That I'm, that I'm not sure of.
How much is this?
About 5,100 square feet. Okay. Change order number two. It is a, it has to do with the building's foundation, adjustments made to the building's foundation. Contractors itemized quotes and so forth account to about $28,624 and so forth. This is a, this is a large number, and it is due to a number of, of key factors which are engineering-driven and so forth. First off, during the rough grading for the, for the, for the building site and the parking area and so forth, we encountered, of course, we encountered the, what we call the tillery mudstone and so forth, that is very prevalent around this area and so forth. But unbeknownst to that mudstone and so forth, we found a couple of outcrop, or at least one major outcrop of rhyolite, which is very common, similar to a granite, it's a very, very, very hard material. One, one outcrop was about, about my height, about the size of this podium, and the contractor took three days with a track excavator and a pneumatic hammer and so forth to, to knock it down, to the point where he, after three days and so forth, he was about eight inches higher than the planned grade elevation for the parking area. With that, it was a decision made and so forth that we, you know, they've done enough hammering on this rock and so forth that, to actually blast this and so forth, blast this rock and so forth, it's cheaper just to go ahead and just, well, adjust the grade of the parking area and so forth. In turn, we, and, and the collateral effect of raising the parking area and so forth eight inches and so forth, we ended up having to raise the building's finished floor elevation two inches. And that is to keep stormwater flow from flowing, you know, off the parking lot and, and then underneath the, the wall penetration at the floor slab. So that was one of the key factors that has driven part of this number and so forth. The second item and so forth is the changes in the footing dimensions. The original plans and so forth called for a generic building envelope. The engineer of record and so forth designed it based on a, in his, in his opinion, so forth, a generic envelope. And he made assumptions based on the bearing capacity of soil and, and so forth, and he had also assumptions on loads and reactions. So he sized footings and so forth based on the generic building envelope. The plans were specified that the contractor select his own building manufacturer of a pre-engineered metal building, a PEMB, and, and submit that, including shop drawings, reactions and so forth, so that we can check those numbers and so forth and revise the foundations as needed. The contractor did pick a Kirby building systems, building. You know, there are, there are other building systems out there and so forth, you had Butler Systems and so forth. The Kirby system and so forth came back, shop drawings stamped by a structural engineer and the loads and reactions were different than what was, what was originally planned on our, for our generic building frame. So the building footprint, the footings footprint and so forth increased, so that, that adds additional concrete, you know, additional excavation and so forth, additional concrete, some additional rebar. So to match up with that kit, because we got, we got different loads and different, different reactions. And the third, the third item and so forth also had to do with the, the rocky subbase material, which of course, when it was coming out from, for excavation, of course, that, that rocky material... that rocky material just can't go back in as backfill and so forth. So, you know, additional stone material, 57 stone and so forth was going to be required. Also, the contractor has provided a budget for additional, and this is the fourth item, the contractor has provided a budget within this $28,000 for additional cubic yards of concrete as a, as kind of a hedge to, for any upgrades and so forth due to, you know, excavations of the footings and so forth being, being wider than what, than, than what they should be. And that's, that's, that's complicated because as you're digging in this, this mudstone-type material and so forth, you, you hit, you hit a little ledge and so forth, and you, and you're trying to get your 18-inch wide trench, you, you pick a little rock ledge, next thing you know, you, you pulled up a 12-inch or a 20-inch piece of rock off the side of your, you know, your excavation. So your excavation becomes bigger. So they have a budget in there for additional concrete. The, the understanding though is that the city will pay for only the actual quantity of concrete poured. The original base bid is 130, 130 cubic yards. His budget for additional concrete pours is an additional 25 cubic yards. Again, you know, we're going to provide construction, we're providing construction oversight and our oversight technician and so forth will be, be on, in the field that day and so forth, verifying the excavation to make sure that if it's an 18-inch wide trench, we're going to keep it at 18-inch wide. So we'll be wa, monitoring the contractor and so forth to make sure that the width and the depth and so forth are maintained for the, for the proper footing sizes.
I didn't understand a lot of what you just said. Nothing yet. But you know, for several thousand years, Stan County has been a source of rhyolite that's been distributed all, and the Hardaway site is here because we have that. I cannot imagine why somebody would not have thought of that when we started this thing, because that stuff is, we, we shipped rhyolite all over the eastern United States. And I, I just don't understand why. And this is the first time we've encountered this sort of thing. Why we don't discover, look at what's under the ground before we start digging it. You know, you can plug a hole in there, and, and if it stops, it's a rock. And if it doesn't stop, then you're free to go. But my, my hole, if I try to stick a shovel in the ground, it does that with nothing but rock. I, I just don't understand why we don't look at that before we start digging.
And we did. We did three soil borings in the, in the building site area and so forth. And each one of the building sites came up with a mudstone. But the...
Does that move down?
No. Well, it's, it's, it's this volcanic mudstone. It's a, it's a weathered rock and so forth that, that's relatively easy to, to using conventional excavation equipment to go ahead and dig it up and move it out of the way. The, the rhyolite was, was, was a surprise. And that's, and that's the stuff that's as hard as granite.
Ms. Hall?
Again, I hate to be the naysayer here, but whenever what's been given to me, it appears to me that we're a little bit, a little bit off with this change order number two than what the original bid that we went out for bid would have been. Is, how different is that, how different is that structurally wise? Does that make any sense? I mean, it looks like to me when you said that, that the contractor has gone out, I think I heard you say this, okay, the contractor has gone out and found another comparable PEMB. If I heard that correctly, is that going off the bids? I mean, with that, do you see what I'm saying? It looks like to me we're not even within the, what we originally went out for bid on.
It is, it is an, an engineering method. It's one of the ways that these projects can be developed and so forth and to allow for competition with contractors to use other comparable building kits. The building kit itself is, is, is a good, it meets the specifications and so forth, the general specifications which were required by the project. So...
Is this the, the general specifications required by the project? We approved one set of them during the bid process. Is that correct?
You, yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. If, if, and I don't know, and I'm not going to go beat that horse, but we may have had other folks bid, and they would have bid other PEMBs, but we granted it to this person. And now he is changing it again? Is that what I understand you to say?
He has not changed it. He has not changed it. It's just his kit changes our, our opinion of what it would have looked like if it had been just a, a basic generic envelope.
But you said it was a generic envelope.
Right. And, and we, we make those assumptions and so forth. And...
Never assume, never. That's the first thing.
Kid, not us. He chose this kid. Why is he built, so it must pay when he chose the kid?
That's what I'm saying. That's what, yeah. We let, we let the bid based on what the proposal was to begin with. That's what I guess I'm saying.
Mm-hmm.
Firstly, I, I wonder if the building that he chose was less expensive than the specs and were, than the price we...
To get the bid.
Had in the original specs, the original projection.
Well, we, we've, we have reviewed his submittals for that building, and it does meet our specifications. The, you know, again, the fact that...
I was just curious if by choosing that, that building kit was less expensive, but then you have this. So you have a change order to offset change from the specifications.
In, in my, in my professional opinion, I, I've, I've worked on a number of projects where we've, we've, we've worked it this way. We've also worked, worked it differently where the owner has gone out and selected a building kit up front as part of the design. And we, we designed the project around that particular kit, that, say, for example, a Butler kit. And then we put it out to bid. Contractors will say, well, the specification require this Butler kit, you know, the AB 1400. Well, Kirby, for example, might have a different kit. But if we're, if we're specifying this, you know, a contractor who reps for Kirby or for other manufacturers and so forth becomes at a disadvantage. So, you know, that's, that's, that's the quandary we, we have there. So the, the way we felt like opening it up for competition and so forth is to allow contractors to submit a building kit which meets the general specifications of the, of that design engineer who said, okay, this, this building kit has to be, meet these requirements, building code requirements and da, 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 and so forth. And on our, on our review of that submittal, we found no fault in any of the, of that submittal. So it did meet his, the general specifications and so forth. The fact that it's changed, the, the, the loads and reactions have changed and so forth is because steel column members may change. Instead of an eight-inch wide, it might be 10-inch wide and so forth. The, the engineer who designed, the conceptual hasn't gotten into that, didn't get down to that detail and so forth. Does get down to the detail when coming up with, with an estimate on the size of the footings. The, the building manufacturer, he gets down into the nuts and bolts and so forth and says, okay, this has to be a W8 column and so forth. This is going to be a 14-inch wide and so forth. So those changes and so forth would, would be some of the differences and so forth, why the loads and the reactions change based on that building kit.
So we got two issues here. We got the rhyolite, we got the building. You have to ask the question. You already know the answer to it, but I'm going to ask it anyway. We negate change order two. Where are we?
Potentially, we end up with a building that just can't be constructed, foundation being as important as it is.
Let's go back and look at the other building.
It seems to me, and, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, we're bailing him out for his error. That's the way we're looking at it. Did our specifications from when we did this request say that we were going to do this if he ran into any issues? I, I, he got to choose the building he wanted to choose. And we gave him the plans. Why is he not putting it up to his, to what we said? Why are we bailing him out now?
Well, sir, I don't see, I don't see that he's at error or at fault on this. And I don't see that this is more of a, I don't see it as a bailout. He, he could have selected another kit, a build, a Butler kit and so forth, and we'd be talking the same, potentially the same issues and so forth. The footings may be just a little bit different. There may be the cost to be a little bit different. Or it could be, it could be negative. It could be money back and so forth, as, as a credit back.
So you're saying our design was not generic enough for all buildings?
I, I believe our design was generic enough for, and, and of course, I'm speaking for the engineer of record who's not here. But I, I do believe that, and we've checked the calculations and so forth based on his assumptions and so forth, and we couldn't find any fault in it.
Mark, let me ask you. So I think this is our first venture in a while into a, a kit type of building versus a stick-built building. So are, are there, you know, we met for a couple hours on Friday talking about these, but are there issues that we're coming into that we're experiencing right now that are, that are basically differences between a stick-built building and what would have been done? Because we picked up this, I guess, PM and, this type of building to, to help with our costs. Had it been a, a stick-built building or site-built building, would the process have been different that would have caught some of these things up front? Do you, do you follow my question that we're, this is our first venture into this type of building. So some of the questions I think the council has, you know, are, are based on our experiences with buildings that are stick-built onsite. So is there something about the process that, that, that opens you, that you don't do or that you do differently with this type of building that is, opens you up for this type of situation? Does that make any sense?
I think, I think of what you're, what you're asking and so forth. And yeah, if, we could have gone as a, as a custom stick-built unit or building and so forth, and then potentially cost, and I, and I'm just going to be off the cuff because I really don't know the, the, the cost increase and so forth, but it could be, it could be 20, 30% more on the cost of the building itself because it's a custom unit. You're, you're, you're putting together steel members based on, not a kit, but, you know, sizing and so forth. So you may have some odd shapes and so forth. The, the kit does lend itself to, you know, cost savings as it, as it, it's, once it's fabricated and, and designed in accordance with the plans, what the plans require, then you've got the, the speed of kit assembly and so forth. It comes with, it comes with a basically the, the, the erector set instructions and so forth. So when the contractor's sub comes out and so forth, they, they erect it in a matter of days and so forth. You know, a custom build and so forth, it can take a little bit longer and so forth.
May I ask Darren a question?
Yes.
Darren, what was the total cost of this, this whole construction?
Let me, I've got a paper right there.
Just, or just, I mean, okay. And while you're doing that, I guess I come back to the original question to Mark, and I think other council members have just echoed it in different forms. Seems like to me what we awarded contractor, the contractor, the bid to do, we are having to go back and, and bail him out. That what he actually, what we awarded, quote unquote, ain't going to work. And it ain't going to work mainly because of the rock, probably. Therefore, he's having to do other adjustments. That's what I understand. And again, this is not what I've done for a living. What was the total of that?
$1,665,000.
How much?
$1,665,000.
For 5,000 square foot, ma'am?
And the erector set instructions.
And what is this building being used for?
It'll have showers and training area, kitchen, offices, all of the things that were currently missing at the site now, sir.
And we had a contingency of $80,000. Is that correct?
Yes.
Total to begin with?
The total budget was 1.6. But that includes furnishings, that includes the septic system, that includes, um, the engineering costs. The, the contract itself was 1.139 for the building, for the construction. And I think what Mark's trying to tell you is that the engineer planned for an engineered building, but he didn't, we didn't spec saying we want this company. We don't want, we didn't say we want a Kirby building. We just said we want a pre-engineered building. When the Kirby was selected, then what he's trying to say is the foundation requirements came back different because they did change over just a generic foundation. So they require it to be a little bit sturdier, which requires a little bit more concrete, more rebar. That's the difference.
But from what I can tell, that's not the majority of the $28,000. It's a little bit more concrete because he said it's only 25, just 25, whatever you...
Twenty-five cubic yards.
Cubic yards more than what we've already given. So it doesn't sound like to me that the 25 cubic yards, the more concrete's the big thing. And it may be, I don't understand.
Some, all of this is just in the foundation. It's, it's just foundation changes. What we were afraid of, we did get into the rock.
Yeah.
Even though we did the borings.
They should have known that.
Well, we did borings. They did foundation borings. They just didn't hit that crop.
We did have contingency for rock, for rock excavation and hammering. I'm sorry.
Didn't we talk about that the la, the first time y'all were here about the rock and couldn't do this, but the haul off? And Chris and I were talking about that earlier this evening.
Was that the sewer, sewer line?
Yeah, I don't recount.
Was that the leachate line?
Yes. We talked about rock for leachate system too.
Okay. So, all right.
The, the issue in the, with the rock and the location that was selected, and Mark can help me out if I, if I misspeak, but one of the other areas that we had looked at for potential location, they were going to have to haul in material, which would have cost us, you know, way more than the 28, what we're looking at for the concrete and the footing work, to have, build an elevated pad, you know, to, to have, had built it up for stormwater management and all like that. So when they selected the site and they did the borings, then this, I mean, I saw it myself. This, you know, it's like a rock dam that runs right through the middle once they made, started grading and cut down. And they were trying to get to their elevations and, you know, I mean, I'm talking about a rock just coming up like this, just, you know, right there in the center. The, the backside of the building was all dirt rock and, and, you know, material that actually met density, was able to use for dense and compaction on the pad. But, you know, just happened to be our luck right in the middle of that building. And really, it wasn't in the middle of it. It was out on the, outside of it at the parking area. But to be able to, to raise the pad up to get proper stormwater management, that's what they got into.
Move the parking lot a little bit. How far along are we on the grading?
The, the grading is done.
Yeah, the rough grading's done. There's, they're going to start the building foundation work.
Bingo.
Also, change order number one, we can stay with the roof that was specced, but it will be like galvanized looking. It will be silver. It won't be like some of these engineered buildings with, you know, the colored side and the colored roof.
Be the same thing. It's on fire station three. That was galvalume.
Let's go on to change order three.
All right. Change order three relates to the subgrade plumbing, which is kind of very similar to, you know, number two. The issue here is that the utility, the plumbing contractor and so forth, and I just want to point out this, let's see. In this area right in here is some areas of that blue rhyolite and so forth. The plumbing contractor was, was able to go ahead and dig through this. And you see a lot of the rock debris and so forth entering around the excavation and so forth. And that's the, that's what I call the mudstone and so forth, that the excavation equipment can go ahead and dig through and so forth. This, what I've circled in blue and so forth is what that, we call the, I call the, the rhyolite or the blue rock. That requires, is, you know, would, would require blasting and so forth. He, he can pick at it and chip at it and maybe put a hammer to it and so forth. The plumbing contractor has to, when he's setting the, the underslab drainage for the sewer drainage and so forth, he has to have, he has to meet standards, minimum standards to, to allow for flow, like 4% slope and so forth for the slope. When we're hitting little outcrops of the blue rock and so forth, you know, it's cheaper to go ahead and just maybe let's reroute the piping away from it to get around it and so forth. Problem is, that opens up the excavation where that piping is going. And of course, the material that you're pulling up can't go back in. It's backfill, so we have to bring in stone. So this change order three reflects the difficulties that this utility contractor has to do to dig, dig, dig. He move, he hits some of this rhyolite, he has to move over, you know, five feet, three feet and so forth, see if he can get around it that way and so forth to keep the, keep the grade to the pipe proper.
Council's having a question on three.
Council has a question on three. How much more expensive is to blast this stuff and try to punch it with?
That is, that is the magic, that's a magic question and so forth, and we could probably have several blasting contractors in here, come and give you all kind of different answers and so forth. You know, if, if you take out the mobilization and the equipment and all that stuff and so forth, they'd probably say, "Well, we can blast it for 100 bucks a cubic yard to 200 cubic, $200 a cubic yard," or something like that. But when they're, if they're going to come out here and do a little piece of rock, you know, the size of this desk, and they got to get it down 12 inches and so forth, you know, you've got the support equipment, you've got the drill rig that comes in, you've got the blasters that come in, the blasting powder agent and so forth, the safety, the labor and so forth, so you can't do that for $100 a cubic yard. It's going to be more like, you know, 5,000 to 7,500, or even more and so forth, so.
Move on to number four.
Number four is a change order for, quote, for $4,139 to change the original spec'd brick exterior veneer. It's a half wall that runs around the perimeter of the building and so forth, and to replace that with a stone veneer. This is a city staff's request, and to provide a more pleasing, more aesthetic appearance and so forth. The stone material, it won't be using the same mudstone material, but it's going to have that look of that, the natural stone that's in that environment and so forth. So again, this is, this is more of an aesthetic appearance change and so forth, because originally spec'd, it was a brick veneer around the building and so forth. And the, I just put some, a couple photographs of what typically would it look like and so forth, about four foot, four foot high and so forth, and just give you, it gives you a little bit of details of what it would look like.
So this, so this change order is just strictly appearance?
Yes, sir.
Just, I got, sorry, I have to add to that too. Also, when, when we were talking about just the appearance of the building, and I checked with a local company here that, you know, sells stone and concrete masonry products, and I was kind of saddened that nobody in Stanley County bid on the job, and so I wanted to see if we could get some local vendor involvement. So I talked with a contractor, and the contractor said he didn't have a regular mason that he would use, so I just went by and talked to, you know, some local folks, and they told us they had this stone material at a reduced rate because it didn't meet another project's spec for weight or something, something that was, you know, spec'd by an engineer somewhere. So we ran the numbers and compared, and from what my understanding from the GC, and Mark can help me out too, then this was a nominal amount to go from a stone veneer, or from a brick veneer to a stone veneer, but it is all about looks and trying to match the surroundings and be something we can be, you know, proud of for the next 30, 50 years, you know.
You can't be proud of brick?
We can't. But what we're in now, what we're looking at, it could be loads better, but, you know, just, just trying to get more local involvement.
But that's the only local, that's the only local vendor.
Yeah, they would be doing the work. They bid it to the, with the contractor to do the work. So like I said, we reached out, I called local folks, and that was, you know, this would be a local business that would, that would interject something from here into the, into the project, so.
Move on to number five, Mark.
Okay. Last one. Change order five has to do with cable trays for the building's IT system. A quote from Dan, from holding building companies, so for the general contractor, for $12,491. This change order, what it does, it fills a gap between two design, you know, construction scope of work documents and so forth. The understanding was, okay, well, who's got, who's doing the cable trays and so forth? Is it your, is it in this scope of work or is it in this scope of work? So apparently, this was an omission, and so we've got a gap of who's going to be responsible for providing and installing the cable trays and so forth. And it's all, this is, this is the vertical, I mean, the horizontal trays, as it goes from one end of the building to the other end, picking up the cables from the server room, taking it to, to the walls, and then, you know, the general contractor's already got it in there, so that he's including the vertical conduits in the walls for the wall penetrations and so forth, da-da-da-da. So the cable trays is just one issue, one item and so forth, that was, basically fell within that gap. My understanding is that the Director of Information Systems and so forth is also soliciting a quote for the same construction services and so forth. And if I'm, unless I'm corrected and so forth, corrected and so forth, if that quote is lower or the, the IT contractor and so forth under a separate contract, his proposal is more advantageous to the city, then this, this $12,491 does not become a change order for, for a holding building company.
So if I understand correctly, two and three, at this point with the company you're working with, we don't have a whole lot of choice on them. Our hands are pretty much tied. Am I seeing what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir.
One and four is total council choice. And five, we can wait till we see what prices that our IT comes back with?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
And the money for the cable trays is going to come out of the network, cabling and security money. We have a budget for that.
Question, so again, I wasn't going to say another word because I feel like I'm playing devil big time in this, but, I mean, I hate to say this, but who missed number five? How come, how come out of 1.665 million dollars, who, I mean, it's small, but who missed that? I mean, who missed that? We didn't have somebody doing that.
I think what you're asking is who did the construction scope?
The omitted scope of work.
Well, this is actually an IT piece, and we only solicited this quote because it needs to be done, and so we're, we're just seeing if they're cheaper than the IT provider.
So you're telling me it was never in the original proposal to do any IT work?
No.
So.
I don't think, what, what was?
So that's not one.
No.
So it's five coming out of the contingency?
The IT portion is a whole separate contract, and we just recently selected a vendor for that, under the IT provisions, you know, the state provisions.
So why is that, so why is that a change order?
Well, it may not be. If they're cheaper, we'll let them do this work and provide the piece, but if they're not.
Oh, and is this all the IT, or is there going to be more IT issues?
Not more.
What'd he say?
He's coming.
He's coming.
Oh, good.
He's got to follow his own.
He's following his own rules and coming to the front.
All of the IT work for the building is, was intentionally kept separate from the mechanical construction of the building. What they're saying here is if the electrical contractor can do it more cheaply than we can do it elsewhere, it has to be a change order to include it underneath the electrical contractor's work.
And see, I didn't hear that. I did not hear that.
I apologize, but that's.
And when will you know that?
This week.
This week.
We'll show us, yeah, we'll have it by this week.
So we can, we can address one through four and look at five next week at our special meeting if we need to.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Because I didn't, I didn't understand that. Maybe I just wasn't listening.
It's still coming out of the contingency?
Yes.
She said it has a separate IT.
Line on it.
I know.
But it's proposed as a change order as part of the contingency.
It's a change order if we let that contractor have it.
Well, this. If they're cheaper.
If they're, we'll, we'll make that decision later. Let's, let's address, well, one through four, and we know two and three, your hands are tied on them. What's your choice, what do you want to do on one and four?
You know, number one, I really don't.
Eliminate.
Problem with it, well, what you're, I mean, you pay $6,720, you're increasing the roof life by 40%.
Increasing it by 40%?
Yeah, from 25 to 35 years, the guarantee.
Yeah.
The roof guarantee.
Okay.
So that increases, you know, the guarantee on your roof by 40%.
Guarantee.
Now, I don't know what, or the warranty. I don't know what percentage that 6,720 is of anything, because I don't know the total cost, but it seems probably fairly small on a roof that size.
So you're advocating for one?
I don't really have a problem with that one. You know, if you're extending, hopefully, based on the length of warranty, if you're extending the roof theoretically by that much.
Yeah, I see that.
It should cover the heating and cooling bills.
Well, that too, yeah.
Take them one at a time.
I just hope the warranty's more accurate than the bid.
Probably too much so that you can't use the warranty.
Yeah.
Ooh.
We can, we can stay with what's due.
All right, let's just do them one at a time. Change order number one.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hall for approval.
Second.
Second, by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, raise your hands, please. All right, let's go back, those in favor.
In favor?
In favor. All right, four, three. All right, change order number two.
I don't have a choice.
If we don't have, we have no choice.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second. By Councilmember Hughes, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed?
No.
Two opposed. Change order number three.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second, by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
One against. Change order number four.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Townsend, second. By Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Raise your hand, please. Those opposed? Change order number five, we will wait and see what they bring back to us next, at our meeting next week after Owen has the time to get in some more prices.
I'm, I have a real problem with this, though. I just, I really do. We get change orders all the time for different things, but I feel like this one particularly, change order number two, personally, and somebody will have to show me, I mean, it's passed now, why it's that much more from, okay, I mean, that, that in itself was about 30% of the contingency of $80,000, that $30,000.
We do have CQA. They're, they're going to be checking the quantities, and that's the most it could be. Hopefully, the concrete will be less.
Well, and, but the concrete in my, from what I heard, was, was just this much of that $30,000. I mean, the con, it's only 25 cubic more yards. I just, for some reason, that's just got a thorn in my side.
The concrete number is about $8,000 to $9,000 of that number.
Okay.
What the, what the contractor's quoted and so forth is around $300, $350 a cubic yard.
Okay.
I think the council tonight has said the same thing we've said at several other times. We're very disappointed in the architect that designed all this. They should have called a lot of this up front, so.
Well, this is our first experience with a kit building, but unfortunately, it's not our first experience with this type of conversation, and it's very disappointing to the, to everybody who bids, because it seems like the, the one, you know, whoever, people come in, they just, they just lowball offers, knowing that they come back and have change orders, and we're, we're somewhat, we're limited. We're kind of in a rock and a hard place, if you will.
No pun.
No pun intended.
We're rhyolited.
Yeah.
Rhyolite.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else you got to bring forward, counsel? Any more good news? Thank you.
Thanks, Mark, sorry.
Number eight, you have two agreements in your agenda to, one is a termination agreement of a current location for office at the Community College Police Department, and another to start a new agreement where they're going to move the West Community Office Police Department.
Move that we approve both agreements and execute them accordingly.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve both agreements with Stanley Community College.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion.
Whoops, he has to recuse himself.
I need an entertaining motion to excuse Councilmember Bramlett. Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Now back, call for the vote on the original motion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Who was the second on that motion? I'm sorry, I missed it.
Which one, the first one?
The first one to actually approve. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Number nine is approval of Alma School Apartment's audio lighting for the auditorium. This has been a very lengthy process. One thing that the staff did want to do, make sure they got many people involved and that was experts on this process, and also to get opinions and thoughts of the people that would be using it, so you have it before you tonight, and it is a multi-part approval. You're going to be approving the audio and lighting if you choose, but you're also going to be approving a secure canopy, secure canopy, correct? Quote for the controlling the access door. Counsel has any questions, Owen will be glad to come forward, but it has been a long diligent process.
I would just say a public thank you to the folks that have been involved in this with Owen's leadership. I mean, we know we have to finish this auditorium. There are people out there wanting to use it, and I, I think Owen has done his due diligence beyond he and his, the group he's been working with, so, you know, I wish it would have been a lot less expensive, but this is something that we can be very proud of moving forward.
I'll entertain a motion, somebody wants to make one?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bramlett, further discussion.
Are we going to still proceed with the fundraising piece of?
Yes, we still need to do that, yes.
And the chair, I mean, and the seats.
Lending seats.
The seats are still.
Mayor, is this the last?
We hope this will be the last hurdle.
And when, when do you think this can be done?
Uh, I think I saw part of this almost 12 weeks, on some of the stuff, by the time they, by the time they got it in and got it installed.
So about end of year, maybe?
Hopefully.
Yay! Yes, that would be wonderful.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. One more decision I would like for counsel to make. We had some original discussions on the drapery, keeping the front drape sort of blue like album on them. The quote originally come in as burgundy, but it can be changed to blue.
Blue.
What's counsel's preference?
Blue. Yes, blue.
I don't hear anybody objecting to that.
I'll be being hard.
Sort of like that red.
Nah.
Owen, I think the selection is blue for the front curtain. All right, next, we also need to do a budget amendment that Mr. Ferris just passed out to you. An ordinance to amend physical year 2017, 18 budget, it is for the purpose we just approved.
Move approval.
$155,000 total for all of the items. Motion by Councilmember Bramlett, second.
I'll take a second.
By Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 10 is ordinance 1730 to revise the special event ordinance. This is a very basic change, but when the state adopted the law on the brunch bill, they changed some definitions that we had different in our ordinance, which our, says they could have, we said you could have alcoholic beverage on the sidewalk or street. Well, their definition's limited spiritualist liquor to only, and we can only have beer and wine, basically, so we had to amend our ordinance to be that.
So will this, will this do the brunch bill?
The brunch bill is done.
Sorry, it's passed.
This is just clarifying that. Brunch bill is in, in effect.
Let's approve ordinance 1730.
I move approval of the ordinance.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second. By Councilmember Bramlett, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Order 1729 to establish a project budget for the state revolving fund project in the water and sewer division.
Move approval of order 1729. Second.
By Councilmember Hall, second. By Councilmember Hughes, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 12, consider revisions to the travel policy. This is removing the exception for council and makes all council members identical to all city employees.
Absolutely.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion. Second, by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number thirteen, request to donate old recycling bins to Albemarle Middle School.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second, by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of a special event permit for Alamo Police Department for the community night out. This is September the sixteenth, and you have a request in your agenda also with the waiver fee.
Move to approve with the waivers.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second. By Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Since this is our last meeting before that, we would encourage everyone to come out on the sixteenth. It's, I think it's from four to eight, and it is in the downtown. So come out and enjoy it. They have a band, and they have refreshments and food, everything you can imagine. Games for the children.
Walk in my shoes for Esther House. It's where the guys walk in heels. Little walk.
How wide are they?
Ever how wide you need them to be.
Number fifteen, consider appointment to the Alamo Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. You have a application for Tanner Deaton for at-large.
Deaton.
Deaton, excuse me.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second. By Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Our Historic Resources Commission, we had appointed Pat Bramlett. She has a conflict on their meeting nights and has submitted her resignation. Uh, the, the board has chosen to change their meeting time in an attempt that council would reappoint Rob McIntyre, who has been on it before. He said he would be willing to do that if they delayed the meeting time till he could get back in town. He has agreed to take it, so if council was so desired, we reappoint him.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, reappoint Rob McIntyre to Historic Resources Commission.
Second.
Second, by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number sixteen, we've had considerable discussion about grant writing and lobbying for us on the federal level that we need to hire a grant writer. Michael is passing out a proposal to you from Keller Partners, who's located in Washington. The research I have done on them, they appear to be a very reputable company. I had no negative comments whatsoever from anyone I talked to. They've had a lot of success getting grants for different communities and different organizations. I sent you an email in case you wanted to look at that list of organizations and their proposal. Their original quote was seventy-five hundred dollars a month. You have to find, sign a twelve-year, twelve-month contract. And I have talked to them, and I've got them down to sixty-five hundred per month. If council chooses to proceed, we would be looking mainly for infrastructure money and electric fund-type money. So we would, if council proceeds, we would split that between the water, sewer, and electrical fund, if you want to proceed with pursuing that. The new fiscal year is coming up October first. We keep hearing there's going to be special infrastructure money. It's totally up to council where you wish to proceed with a, this type of service.
Mayor, I, I can see it. Having been involved in this for many years, former life of mine, I can see great advantage to having this kind of connection. However, I think in the long run, that's not the best way. This is that, this would be a stopgap kind of thing, but I think we ought to do this internally only. Because you can do that by developing relationships primarily with congressmen's administrative assistants and that sort of thing, and get the same thing done. Nothing beats a congressionally acquired in terms of dealing with a federal agency. I think, I'm personally happy to go along with this for a week, just to see how it goes, but I think in the long run, we need to follow another way.
Do we not need to compare apples with oranges with some, maybe somebody else, just to see?
The other company I reached out to, ironically, was this gentleman's partner, and they separated. So I can't tell you a whole lot of difference. In fact, a lot of the background I did was when they were called, I can't think of the name. It was a two-partners name, and they have since separated. Majority of people I talked with stayed with Keller rather than the other one, but there is another one out there we can talk about. Whether there's more than that, I do not know.
And then, and then one, one more question.
Sure.
How do we know with this sixty-five hundred per month, how does that relate to like if we had, say like a grant coordinator on city staff to monitor compliance? You know, because once we get grants, somebody still got to monitor the compliance on a monthly or basis or annual basis, whatever, you know?
And that's totally up the staff. I, I think the biggest thing that I see from this group, if we decide to use them, is we need to lobby us, somebody lobbying for us in Washington. I mean, we can hire a grant writer to write a grant for a lot less money, but if you don't have anybody lobbying, it is going to be a different.
But that's what this person is doing, writing and lobbying.
Yeah, he's lobbying.
This is both.
So you have the connection. He will write and lobby for it. And the only additional expense, you will have a little additional expense above the sixty-five hundred. He will come here one time each year and see what all we've got, and then we will have to go to the congressional committee meetings. If, when they have a committee meeting and they want us to prepare for them, we'll have to go up there.
How do we measure, like, if we do this, how can we measure what we get from them?
I don't think you can until you get a year under your belt. It's, 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 it's a gamble. I mean, you have to decide whether you want to try this for a year. The cities I've spoke to, all got a lot, way more money than they spent. But one of the cities I talked to was in their fourth year. They're very happy they've been continuing it. It's, it's hard to say. This is something we have no experience with.
The cities that you're talking about, are they, have they done business with these folks before? Is that, is that?
Yes, that's what I was looking for, references, yes.
Okay.
It's totally council's decision whether you want to try it or not.
With regard to all the projects that we have going, the corporate center with Cassett, God knows whatever else is out there that we're dealing with, how, I guess, Mark, how much benefit would that be to you, especially with the corporate center and getting this type of professional assistance? I mean, we got, we got a lot of money tied up in that thing, so I don't think anything that we could get.
What I find with, with those groups is the best, the benefit that you get from them is, is the contacts that they have, and they, they're continually contacting the congressman and their aides, and finding out what's available, and providing information from the community to them at key times when it's difficult, say, for the staff to know when those key meetings are and that kind of stuff. It just, it creates a link that keeps a strong communication and informs us when things are happening, and informs the congressional aides, really, it's mostly their aides that are doing all the work, about, you know, what are, when they come every year, they're going to come and get the goals and, and projects that we're working on. And then they will, you know, track those through the process, through the year. And then, when it's appropriate for them, they'll contact the aides and find out when things are going on, and then they report to us. And then, the leadership, it could be at a National League of Cities meeting or something like that, you could just, as part of that process, you could set up a meeting while you're there and visit with the congressman themselves. And when you have leadership like the mayor and the council members up there, usually the congressman and the, their key aides will make time to, to visit with you. You just have to make an appointment in advance. And so you're just, you know, you're, you're telling, you're telling the story of what the, the community needs, and there's a tracking process that goes on in Washington, and then they make you aware when you need to be there, or, you know, when there's, like I said, with whatever the meetings are that are planned, where you might be up there anyway, then you, you go in and you get a chance to make a presentation to the congressman and their aides, the key people. So that's really, to me, that's the, the advantages, the knowledge that they have, and they kind of facilitate that for us.
One of the things that they do, do do is, they will not represent more than one city or county in North Carolina unless we approve them having a second one. I, I think the main thing, we don't want them up there representing our, we won't talk about this city and now ten minutes later, talk about a different city. We would rather, you know, not be representing the same, same people more than one in the state. Yes, sir.
I think there are two or three things they can do for us. Number one, they can alert us to projects that we may not even know.
Money that's up there.
Programs that we don't even know about. Number two, and I've talked, I've been there so many times, these, these people who, who approve proposals and review them, they'll have three stacks on their desk. If a proposal, if a, if a grant, if a proposal, excuse me, is beautifully written and is well-done, it's going to get funded, no matter whether they, they intervene on your behalf or not. If it is a very poor proposal, you're not going to get funded, no matter who asked about it. But the lot, about half of them are right in the middle, and it does make a difference with those, which ones get pulled out of the middle file and moved over to the funded file. So this kind of contact, I doubt we've ever used much before, can be greatly to our advantage in making the difference in that middle file.
Ms. Hughes?
Um, I don't know, lost my train of thought, I'm sorry.
My, that was a personal, my question is, what could we get in the short term, looking at where we may want to go, long term, based on what you were saying?
Would, would they do this with a review after six months?
You have to sign a one-year contract.
Oh, I know what it was. So it's.
And I will.
Go ahead.
I will tell you that a couple of the cities I talked with said at twelve months, the money had not come in, but it was in the process, so they signed the second year, and then the money came in.
I understand, I understand.
Ms. Hughes?
Okay, to confirm, so we would be the only city in the state of North Carolina that they would be?
Be the only city they would be working for.
Okay, okay.
But have there a lot of other people working for a lot of other cities?
Oh, yeah, but I mean, these are, they're on our behalf, okay.
I wonder, do you know how many, he may not have said this, how many clients in general he would have?
No, I, I do not.
In dozens, or?
I don't know that.
But I looked at the list that, that you sent out, and some of those grants were pretty impressive.
Yes, they were.
And I will be, if, if council wants me to get any more information, I'll be glad to get you some confirmation, if I can, as much as I can.
I think having this type of affiliation makes, makes us a lot more competitive.
Mm-hmm.
I really do.
Would he report like, monthly or we, whatever, I mean, how often would we get updates on what's going on?
From the cities I talked to, they said they were constantly in contact.
Okay.
That's the only thing I can tell you. They were constantly in contact with them. And now, I will give you, and I'm not going to call the city, because I can't remember, got, got one of the tiger grants, said they made like four trips up there. They, they went to see the committee, they went to the White House, they went to several different places, but they got a very large tiger grant.
Yeah.
We can do that. I will tell you that a lot of towns in our cog region, Mooresville, Statesville, Salisbury, they all have.
Newton.
Huh? Well, Newton's not in our region, but I'm talking about in the nine counties that we are a part of, they have lobbyists, number one. And then they have grant writers. It's two, in my humble opinion, it's actually two different, two different, um, set, scopes of work. One is writing them, and, and one is actually managing them or lobbying them. I find it interesting that he does both. Central Island Council of Government has entered into a contract, and I voted against it, about putting public money, cog money, at a big rate into a lobbyist for the, the region, okay? Because this particular lobbyist also lobbies for certain towns in our region. I was not happy with that, okay? Because it's almost like double-dipping, those kinds of things. But she has, is well-known in DC, and if you mention this particular person's name, folks know who she is because of her years being there. I was on a phone call last week with Senator Tillis's office, representing Central Island Council of Government, and we talked about the brownfields issues that we have here in Albemarle, and they compared them to the brownfields issues and, and program in Statesville. Statesville's moving forward with re-upping theirs and upgrading and doing, fixing those brownfield issues, if you will. Senator Tillis's office was very much aware of that and very supportive of that. We can go to DC, but guys, they come out of DC on a regular basis and are at home. Hudson's office is setting up an opportunity for us to meet with him. We were going to do it in August, and this is the regional cog, but if I go, I've taken Ronnie with me in the past, I think I took you last year with me. I am open for anybody to go with me, even though it's a cog meeting with, with the congressman. He can only do it the week of the eighteenth of September and has yet to get back with us. Again, it's regional things, but if he knows what our needs are, then, we already have that, we really do. I'm sure there's anybody at this table that can pick up the phone and call Richard Hudson. So we have that knowledge. And the last thing I would have is, you mentioned that this would be charged seventy-eight thousand dollars a year, actually is what it is. Would be charged between water and sewer and electric. What about, what about if there's other, what if, if he gets us money for the complex, okay? So that, would we then charge part of that then to the parks? I'm saying, are we upfront, doing just water, sewer, and electrical, or are we going to have the opportunity to adjust that?
What's mainly available is infrastructure, but if there's something else comes available, yes, we can apply for anything.
That's what I'm saying, but what I'm charging, I'm talking about out of our budget. Are we going?
At this point, I guess you would just be approving the infrastructure.
Of water, sewer, and electrical.
Water, sewer, and electric. But again, they can always represent us in any.
Oh, that's, I know.
They can represent.
National Endowment for the Arts and Humanities, they can do that too.
Oh, my God.
They, they have the connections with everything.
I also reached out to National League of Cities today and talked to them, and where the, the difference is, they have grant writers and they have lobbyists. But I guess where the difference is, where this gentleman will be lobbying for us only, they're going to be lobbying for all the league of cities.
Right, right.
Now, we're going to have to do a lot of proposal writing on our own.
Right.
Don't, don't expect them to do the whole thing.
Here's what we want, and you make it look good.
Well, we're getting something that we don't have, and would take years to build on our, our own. If we had lots of money, it'd be great to have somebody here and start building these relationships. We're, we're basically contracting into existing relationships and networking, and Councilmember Hall, I think, is right, there's two different things going on here. There's, one, there's a relationship building that could help us with earmarks. You know, it's not as common a term as what it used to be, but, I mean, I think we're only fooling ourselves. We say it still does not happen, when there's an opportunity for someone to, to say, well, let's include another city or jurisdiction in this, this funding, it can't happen. And secondly, the grant writing, you know, we're all well-aware of the, the grants that we typically go after and the loans we go after, and every city goes after part of money.
Same thing.
The same thing. We're, we're at the point with some of these projects where they're complicated enough, large enough, and we, we need all the help we can get. So what don't, what, what don't we know? What aren't we accessing?
what, what don't we know? What aren't we accessing? And that's the expertise, I think, that we would be buying into. Now, now it doesn't, you know, say that's what council wants to do, but I think that's really what we're talking about, getting into that established network and seeing where that does get us.
And that goes back to the point where, you know, you've got all these cities buying for this money. I think it just makes us more competitive.
Now, council, if council wants to move forward tonight, fine. If you want to study it until our next meeting, that's fine too. But we, if we're going to do it, we do need to move forward this month.
October 1st.
Second, motion by Councilmember Bramlett, second by Councilmember Dryden, move forward. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 17, Chief Oak, you want to come up for an introduction of our new fire marshal?
After this meeting, you might leave.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just want to take a, a brief minute to introduce our new fire marshal, who is to my right, Michael Rourke. Michael comes to us from Stanley County where he served as the fire marshal for the past 10 years. I think we landed a gem with Michael in that he's already very familiar with a lot of the systems that, that council and other members in the community have worked very hard to build over the past few years. And, and he definitely wants to continue to build on what Brian Taylor had, had worked on with our fire marshal's office. So his office will be located where Brian's was up in planning and community development. So feel free, now that you've had the opportunity to see who he is, to reach out to him if you need anything at all that he can possibly help with. So, Michael Rourke.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity. Just so you know, I did have a fairly lengthy speech that I was going to say tonight, but for time's sake, I'll just, I'll withhold that. But I am excited to be here. I'm grateful for the opportunity and I'm just looking forward to continuing the, the great work that the city has, has been endeavored in and especially with Fire Marshal's office and, and the Fire Department. So y'all know where I'm at. If you need anything, don't hesitate.
Michael, thank you for coming on board. We look forward to it. And we'll just say upfront, you're the face of this council and this city for all new business applications and permits and helping, helping our new businesses get started.
Feel the pressure.
So we want you to lose the word no out of your vocabulary.
I will do the best I can.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 18, quarterly business update. Kevin?
There we go.
I love it.
Yeah, we've got, we've got, we, we got a few of these on here that were change in ownership. One of those was Dr. Moon there. And then also Quality and Speedway's and McDonald's, those were change in ownership. So not, not much different with those. Pretty, pretty standard. I think we're pretty much on course of where we were. We've been for the past couple of quarters with new businesses and jobs. We've got a lot of small businesses of one or two mom and pop kind of businesses. We've got a few a little bit larger than that. And then we've got a few restaurants, a couple of restaurants opening up as well that are going to provide several more service sector jobs to the economy.
You may not know this, but let me ask anyway, do you know who the new owners of Speedway and McDonald's are?
I do have it. I don't have it included on here, but I'd be happy to pull that up for you.
I'd like, I'd like to know that.
Yeah.
Because the McDonald's guy.
He sold.
But he, he owns these two and Lucas, too.
He did.
He sold? All of them.
I'm not sure about all of them. Most of them.
I, I have a representative name for McDonald's, but it's like three, it's like 3MM something else that bought it out. That's the name of the company. And Speedway, I've got that too. I don't have it written down right now, though.
Casket Company?
Yeah, Casket Company. I spoke with him today, actually, and he's, he's actually doing pretty good business over there.
Salvation Army on Heath Street. Heath Street is run right there by Elizabeth Heights, right?
Yeah, it's, it's going to be, they're off, they're going to have an office there.
On Heath Street?
On Heath Street.
It's got to be in a house.
Yeah, it's a house. That's in CBD, Central Business District there still, I believe.
Is Dr. Moon living there?
Uh, no, I don't believe so. No, he.
He's coming in. He bought out Destinistry.
Right.
Dest, D E S T.
On First Street. On First Street.
Or, well, this is Second Street where this one is.
He bought Burnside. That's.
It's on the corner of Second and Wilson, I think.
Oh, he bought, he bought, he bought the Destinistry in Locust. So he didn't buy this one here then, just the one in Locust.
No, I think he, he bought this one here.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Dicky's Barbecue, so tell me more about that.
Uh, Dicky's Barbecue is a, I think they're, they're a national chain. I don't think they've got a, maybe 100 or so nationwide right now.
Remember where Ask and Robbins was before they moved in?
Yeah.
On the very end, that's where they're going.
Yeah. Just down past El Ranchito down there. They're, they're going to have a drive-through on there.
Yeah, yeah.
Brisket and pork barbecue and Texas style, though, I think.
There's no barbecue, I'll think, on that side of town. Nothing on that side of town. Okay, tell me more about this Casket Company. I had no idea.
I've owned it years.
No. You were by there today?
I, I spoke with the gentleman today. He says business is pretty, pretty well, it's him and, and they actually, he, he makes caskets there and then he, he does them custom as well, I guess.
Okay, so Ken 19, somebody tell me how far out.
He is in the old Walters Printing, which was recently a gun shop.
Right.
He's in the same building.
Right there on the corner.
And he is the gentleman that has been flying one of the drones around town at all of the downtown events.
Gerley.
Yes.
Last name Gerley, Roger Gerl.
Put it all up on, on Facebook and everything.
And he has, he parks his vehicle sometime on First Street. I remember he lives on First Street because I've seen that. Yep. Okay, now I know who that is.
Okay. Council, any further questions?
Love it. 92 more jobs. That's great.
Number 19 is information. The city has received $750,000 from the North Carolina Rural Infrastructure Authority grant for the development of Alamo Corporate Center. And we owe Mark a big thank you for that one. He went and got that. Thank you, Mark.
New spec buildings going to have a strike there.
We, we will be required to match that with 250,000 when the paperwork comes through. And we anticipate using that for probably the road, road infrastructure to begin with.
Yep.
Number 20 is information. The city has been awarded an urban and community forestry grant. Michael, does anybody want to comment on that? Do you have the information in your agenda?
Christina's shaking her head, no.
Thanks for Christina, though. Thank you, Christina.
She, she applied for that grant.
Thank you, thank you.
Organized it and.
Dog park opening.
Tried to, tried to do some things around the dog park. She presented it to the Tree, the Tree Commission at their last meeting. So we're going to have everything, the grand opening and of the dog park, the ribbon cutting of the dog park and everything all rolled into one.
If you've not been up and looked at the new dog park and the trail, I encourage you to do so because I've heard nothing but positive comments about it. Number 21 is a proposed apartment complex on Woodhaven Drive. This is just for your information. Several years ago, council rezoned that area for that when we also did the apartments adjacent to it. And the road was redesigned by the city at that time and cut in there. So this will bring in, I think, about 80 units. Let me see, Kevin. There it is. About 80 units. And Kevin, am I correct? The only thing the council will have to brew will be the site plan when it comes forward?
Yeah, the ordinance is very vague on this process. It's not really condition of use, but it's, it's something that's required to come for council anytime there's more than eight units on a parcel. So zoned appropriately for it. There would be 80 units in this case. We will, we'll be bringing the site plan before planning board next month or this month and then to, back to you guys on October, beginning of October.
Is this the 10 acres behind Greens Bush's shop?
No, that one didn't. That was one of them that applied if you not get funded. This is the one, if you go down Woodhaven, you know where we had to redesign the road a little bit? And to the left is the assisted living area.
Mar chase.
Mar chase. And to the right, it'll be to the right beyond, like you got assisted living, you got, then you got the individual apartments, Mar chase. It'll be kind of be up to the right of Mar chase and beyond the assisted living.
Yeah, the entrance, entrance would probably be directly across the entrance from Mar chase right there. Yeah.
Okay. Back off to the right as it goes back down the creek.
That's correct.
Got you. Anyone have any questions about that? This is for information only tonight. Yeah. Thank you, Kevin. All right, coming around, Mr. Ferris.
Just one item to point out. Ross Holzhauser, Street Superintendent, is here this evening and he advised me last week that the NC DOT has let him know that they've been able to receive funding for the pedestrian safety improvements on Main Street, right in front of Farmer's Market, where we had the pedestrian safety zone there. They anticipate letting the project in the spring of 2018. And they told us they'll be back in touch with us at a later date to let us, I guess, have input and possibly talk about how we pay for some additional design improvements, you know, that we want, you know, if we want to say, at the very least, stamp the street leading up to both sides of the pedestrian refuge in the middle and anything else we might want to do. So they'll be back in touch, but it looks like that project was on, is on go. So, you know, it didn't happen exactly when we wanted it to, but all of our efforts have, you know, have led to this, so.
Mr. Town?
No comments.
Ms. Hughes?
No comments.
Mr. Aldrich?
Uh, just a, just a couple of things. First of all, I wanted to say thank you to Waste Management. I don't, I can't speak for the entire city, but it seems like on the north end of the city, we've, we've made some progress. I mean, I, I know the, the recycling stuff has been picked up on time. The regular waste has been picked up on time. So that's, so that's good stuff. Thank you to them. Second thing is, I've had several people, I know that this year we're going to adjust the timing of the Christmas parade back to 10:30 on Saturday morning. I've had several people ask about why we, why we don't allow candy to be thrown out during the Christmas parade. And my response in the last, in the last several years has been because it's night, there, there's a certain level of danger. You know, we didn't want anybody to get hit, things like that. But I just wanted to kind of throw that out there and see if we should maybe revisit that.
It's been a safety issue. I know back several years ago, that was one of the requests from the insurance carrier.
Really?
Now that there's the city insurance carrier, ah, we may better visit that before we say yes or no.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's at least look at it because I know a lot, or several of the other parades in the county do allow candy to be thrown. And, you know, we, I want it to be as festive as possible and.
We've encouraged them to walk beside the floats and hand it out rather than throw it.
Okay, either way.
Just whatever we, council wishes to do, but we probably need to check with our insurance carrier and make sure there's no issues. Anything further?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hall?
Nothing.
Mr. Dry?
Also, I'd like to thank Waste Management. They did an exceptional job that we got missed twice out of the four weeks on the west side of town. But they came in and right on schedule and took care of everything. We'll see again this Friday if we get continuity. Also, with the, the night, community night out, again, encourage everyone to come out and enjoy everything that goes on. Hopefully, we won't have rain this year and we can get a good crowd. A lot of stuff going on and it's going to be quite informative for families with children as to what you can do to try to stay out of some difficult situations.
Mr. Dry, if they're not there Friday, give them the Saturday since this is a holiday week.
No, they were there early yesterday in my house. I'm a Monday person. Yeah, they were there.
What the guy told me was that the first time he was on vacation and the second time they were so far behind that he just couldn't get here. But he was going to make an effort because I was standing out there waiting on him.
They did, I mean, they were early yesterday.
Mr. Williams?
They're rolling when they get past my house. They're not slowing down. I don't, I don't have anything. Mr. Bram?
Just a word or two on the museum or the history center, as it's now called. That thing with, with the director over there has just blossomed.
Yes, it has.
Tremendous number of children's programs and that sort of thing. That just, you can't believe the difference in the activity there and what it was in the old building. With that in mind, we've got a little glitch there. The move was, somebody approved the move of the sports hall effect to put that in the hallway. The provisions have been made for it. All of the, the materials have been moved down to this building. They're packed in boxes in the basement, which is not real good. And, and what the glitch is that the, that the cases up in the, up at Quimby area were too tall for the hallway down here. The, the people who originally started that have money that they can spend to, to lower those cases and everything. But somewhere, the glitch is that nobody knows who's on first.
Have they still not picked them up?
They still have not.
Lisa, would you reach out to Mark Mayberry tomorrow and ask him about that?
I have several time. Mark, let us know if any.
What about Toby? Reach him back to Toby.
See, the, the thing of it is, it came somehow or another, that thing got taken over by our parks and rent. And I just wondered, is it okay if I talk with Lisa and?
Yes, 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 yes.
Talk about what, what we might do about that.
Mark and Brett Spade handled it, had gotten the quotes and all. I don't know why they haven't been picked up.
They just don't.
Yes, I think we can just reach out and get it done.
Nobody's on first.
I said there's some money.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe there's some money in that committee that originally had the sports hall effect.
Anything further, Mr. Bram? Anyone in the audience have anything to come forward, council? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. We go.
Ross.
Ross, you better speak up in a hurry.
Just a reminder, next Saturday as well, 16th, 2012, we have our first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That'd be good. Get that on our Facebook page as much as you can. Entertaining motion, we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11, 3 and 4 to consult with the attorney and economic development.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.